Go ahead.
I thought we had an agreement, once I had the fence up that everything would be okay and I'd be building my home there.
Well, but have you done, have you got the permit to do that?
That's what I'm working on. I've got all my building plans. I've been talking to Perry on it. I've told Perry what's going on and then uh.
Well, that's what I'm saying, has it been approved? I don't know where we're at on that because I haven't gotten any information from Perry, so that's why I'm under the impression that we're not done with this yet. Okay, I don't have, I have not heard of any permits, things going on.
Here's my drawings.
Yeah, I know you've got the drawings, but I'm just saying, do you have a building permit yet?
No, I don't have a building permit.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, because I don't know where we're at with the process. I know you've talked to Perry, but I don't know where we are with the process. Okay? The concern that I have, and I have had this for awhile, is things are taking forever. We have sent five letters at this point, okay? You got a fence up, you still have things by the road, okay? Now I've got three trailers sitting by the road still that are not moved, okay?
Those fences have been behind the fence.
They have now, okay, because they weren't the other day, from what I understand. Um, you guys help me out here on the other properties in town here? Has there been anything done over here in town?
I haven't seen.
Okay.
Everything in town has got current license plates on it.
Okay, and is on a proper surface?
Yes, it's on gravel. Gravel, and they got a matting down so that the grass don't come through.
Okay, so, on the set that's behind the fence right now, so what happens if we start getting complaints from property owners in Fargo? You're not zoned to have those cars there like that, that's why I'm asking. Yes, we don't see them from the road, but it's not zoned to handle that, right? Where those car, where you have all the cars parked, if I start getting some phone calls from the people on the north side by Fargo about junk, nuisance, that kind of thing? You're not zoned to have that there.
Well, I've got license on, on majority of them. There's a few that don't have license on them, but they've got license on all of them that are drivable and everything.
So we can go start them all up tomorrow morning, we can drive them out of there?
Well, if I put batteries in them.
Okay, if we put batteries in them, we'll all start up tomorrow morning, we can drive them out?
Majority of them, not all of them, but majority of them.
Alright. Like I said, I'm just, uh, we're trying to clean up things, Gary, and that's why you're getting this, because it hasn't been for a long time.
Once I get my building permits, I've got building materials in those trailers, semi-trailers. Once I get my building permit so I can start building, I can get rid of the trailers. I don't want to have those trailers there.
But you realize we've been at this a whole year now. I had conversations with you last year about this. I would've thought that all this stuff could've been squared away by now, that's why I'm saying, this needs to get done, okay? I don't want, I don't want to have this conversation anymore. The five letters is enough, and like I said, I'm frustrated that this hasn't been squared away. That's where I'm at, okay? You had Brian, you wanted, go ahead, go ahead.
Would you like your recommendation from us, or?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm probably just more venting here than anything, so.
Uh, the recommendation from staff is more on the angle of, Mr. Vandevik has made progress cleaning up the properties.
It appears so, yes.
We have seen, I don't know if the council members have driven by there or not. Uh, he has made progress to clean up the property of cutting the grass and clean that up. Looks quite a bit different.
Much better than it has, yes.
Um, my recommendation would give him a set timeline to continue to make progress or have that progress. However, that's up to the council to decide what timeline you'd like, or if you want to have it done right away.
The problem is, is we made the same statement in June, so, I mean, a letter is the only time action is taken, so. And that, that's the fundamental issue. If the only time that things are happening is when we send a letter, then that's unacceptable. So, we, we already made the decision in June to delay activity, because, you know, we're gonna give, there was some progress, similar, similar statement, right? So, how much more time? I mean, we, like Corey said, it's, we've been done this, we've gone through this exercise multiple times. At what point does, we have to stop and, and deal with it, and make sure that it's no more? Because at what point do we allow others, you know, say, oh, well, we can let this go, and we can't let it go?
I've been trying to get a building permit for the last twelve years. I got told it was a moratorium, and there was. I went and got a hydro test for another building when Dwight was around. He said, well, we'll let you build if you get a hydro test. So, we get the hydro test, and then he told me, no, we're not gonna, I showed him all the paperwork, five hundred and some dollars that I did there. And he says, no, we're not gonna make a, give you a building permit. He said, it's gonna look like Seventy-Sixth Avenue. And then, then he said one time too, that he's gonna make a park out of that. I mean, I've been told so many things over the last twelve years, I don't know what to believe. And that's why, when Corey and I sat down last year, I said, well, I'll get a fence up. I'll start working on getting a building in there, getting things cleared out, and things so that it's organized. I don't want to create a junkyard. I want to build there. Any of the vehicles that I got there are all my vehicles. They're my hobby. I don't hunt fish, go to the lakes and all that stuff. Cars and tractors, farming, that's what I've done all my life. And that's what I'm all about. And I'm not trying to start anything, I'm not, I mean, all I want to do is, is build my home there and be able to retire. I mean, that's.
So what's holding up the building permit now?
What?
What is holding up you from getting a permit at this time?
Well, my builder had colon operation that messed me upstairs this spring. And then, uh, the guy that's gonna do the concrete work, well, he had a heart attack, because I think he's gonna be all online, everybody will be online now the first of September. And that's what I'm working on, trying to go with, hit with Perry to get a building permit. I've got all the, the, the blueprints, you know, for the building and everything. And he's gone through, and I've met with him probably five times already, in getting that all going. I've been working on this since last October.
Wow, so, then, then somehow you've got to expedite that process to get it through the planning and zoning. Because this has to get through planning and zoning before we'll hear anything about, you know, the building permit. So, it's not up for us to decide, it's up to the recommendation of planning and zoning, and what's gonna happen with that, and I would say that that has to happen soon. If you want, because we cannot let this continue.
We don't build his permits.
Well, I know that, but he got, but he approved the, the plan for what he's gonna be doing, right, on that property?
No. No. Building, building permits are handled internally.
Oh, but it's based on what the plan or what's intended to be built on, the type of property that it is?
If there's changes, like a zoning change, or a lot split, or condition lease, or anything like that, that's where it goes.
Is there a house on the property now?
No.
The only thing that can be built there is a house.
Yeah.
You can't build, you can't build a building first.
An outbuilding first.
And then a house.
Right.
That's, that is against regulations. So, it has to be the house first.
Yep, and, and my understanding briefly, talking to Perry, was that was one of the issues with the building permit? Was the, just building, an outbuilding before a house.
No, that, that was earlier, but when we got this winter, like, I've got a fifty by sixteen home that I want to build. With a two-stall garage on there, and, so I can park my RV in one end of it, and smaller door will be for cars going in and out in the suburb. And it's zoned, uh, out suburban residential, and I got all, I mean, the site plan and everything, and that, that's approved by Perry. But I, I've just gotta finish up all the little details with the builder and the, how the.
But the issue, the issue at hand though, is, I mean, even if you get the building permit, it's gonna be three, six more months before you've got a building that you can put all these vehicles in, and the tractor trailer won't fit in there. So, until then, what, what do we do?
Well, the, the trailers have got building material in there. Once I get the shell of the building up, I can move that stuff out of there. I've got trailers sold. I mean, it's not like I want to keep them there. That's not my intent at all.
To, to finish your recommendation, uh, like I said, is, since progress has been made, I know we don't like the time, uh, but to give a set time. My suggestion was two weeks, and then say at two weeks, if the progress hasn't been made to a satisfactory level of the council, then on the twenty-first, I believe is the date, that'd be Tuesday, twenty-first, to tackle the, or handle the abatement of any of the nuisances. That way, there is a given time for continued progress, and then we could follow up with council at the next meeting, briefly just saying, here's what's been done. But, then you have a set deal to where on the twenty-first, if the progress hasn't been made to abate the nuisance, then you already have it set, this is when you're gonna have the issue cleaned up. If you would like to, you, that's just a recommendation, since progress has been made, and it's been more progress than it has been in the past. However, if you would like, you're able to proceed with the abatement of the issues.
Completely understand. It's the exact same conversation we had in June, so.
So.
I just highly doubt that we're gonna make that much progress in the next two weeks, based on past track record, so. I, I'm okay with giving it two more weeks, but at some point, we gotta draw the line. So, how, what is, what is the expectation in two weeks? That the building permit is either been granted or denied? That, 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 because that's really the crux of the whole issue. If the building permit hasn't been granted in the next two weeks, what, okay, so let's say it is granted in two weeks. Uh, I'm quite certain all that, you know, the equipment and so forth, isn't gonna be moved from there, it's still gonna be there. Because then, ideally, construction would begin, right?
Correct.
But then, we're talking another three to six months of construction, so I, the problem is still there.
Yep.
Gary, I'm somewhat sympathetic to your plight, that you've had issues with contractors being sick and all that stuff, but, again, I'm sitting here looking at five letters have been sent to you. And I had a talk with you last year, figuring that this stuff was gonna get cleaned up, and I wouldn't have to have this conversation with you again. And now this spring, there was still stuff laying around out there that hasn't been squared away. I'm frustrated with that, okay? I cannot have people leaving crap all over their yards and their property like that, and expect the rest of the town to sit and abide by my nuisance rules that we, we agreed to here, okay? So, you got your sixth letter now. You need to get this straightened out, okay? I don't want to see any more garbage, I don't want to see any more vehicles, I don't want to see any more trailers by the road, I want that place cleaned up. You've done a fairly good job, I want you to keep it that way.
I do.
No, I, just listen, I want that stuff squared away, okay? No more. You don't want to send out any more letters. This is done, okay? So, whatever you guys want, you know, that's my case here.
So, recommendation is we'll, we'll reassess in two weeks?
Well, actually, I was recommending that you have a set date. So, basically, even at the next council meeting, they would, and already decided before the council meeting. So, you have a set date saying, if it's not resolved by this time, then.
Well, what is that next thing? Is that next thing the building permit?
Well, they would have the building permit, but you would still have that issue of the vehicles and trailers and all that. So, it's where your comfort level is. Uh, to totally abate the problem, or be in compliance with the zoning, you'd have to have the vehicles removed, have the trailers removed, and parked on the approved surfaces. So, you could say, you know, you have to have approved service in a certain area.
I'm to the point where it's just like, it's gotta abide by the ordinance.
Yep.
Period.
If you want to abide by the zoning, and Lucas, please correct me if I'm wrong, expand. Then, the zoning doesn't allow unless it's on approved surfaces. So, you'd have to have all those vehicles or things parked on approved surface, and then it would be allowed. Uh, you'd still ask to have it cleaned up, but that would be your Band-Aid approach.
Lucas, you have any recommendations beyond what Brent's talked about?
Uh, I agree with that, it's just, it, it needs to be something that's determined, so then, the property owner knows what he needs to do. If you are gonna allow for two weeks, but I think it should be, like Brent is saying, where it's two weeks, and then if not, at that time, it's not going back to the city council, it's just, if it's not done in two weeks.
Yeah, we won't be having this discussion again.
The tow truck companies are, are moving, just like at that hearing we had last year, where the city council directed city officials to go in and abate the nuisance.
Yep, and I interceded. We'll do that again.
Two companies were underway.
Yep.
But, the, the city has given proper notice, I mean, six letters.
Beyond, beyond. Okay. Reluctantly, we'll, we'll reassess a couple of weeks. I, I'll take your recommendation.
But, do you want to have a set date?
Well, yeah, that's what we're thinking.
When, if it's not abated by that, that that would be addressed, or do you want to just want to have a reassess in two weeks?
Why would we just postpone this decision for two weeks for the next council meeting, which is the twentieth?
I don't think anything is gonna change.
Exactly, so.
So, that's.
I guess, you, you feel that there's gonna be improvements in the next two weeks? Or do you feel that there's a chance we can get a building permit?
What do you want to be doing first?
First thing would make, make sure that you get the building permit. Either, either get that approved or you're denied. Whi- whichever, let's make a decision on the building permit, because that's the starting point. If we don't, if we're not gonna be building there, you know, or, or what you plan, then we know nothing is gonna change, or at least there's not gonna be a house there in, you know. If it gets approved for a house building, then we have to see some measure of progress, that that is gonna start. So that it becomes an active home construction zone. Otherwise, stuff has to move. So, to me, that would be the most important thing, is get busy with the next two weeks with Perry, and get that, get that thing resolved.
It won't happen in two weeks.
Perry will be, would be back in office on the fourteenth.
Oh, so he's not back for another week?
Well, it could happen.
It could still happen. That gives Mr. Vandevik this week to get his building permit materials together.
We can write the permit, can we not?
Well, we'd probably still have Perry review it.
I, I, I still think we gotta have Perry.
He's gotta have a review.
But it gives, it gives him about a week to still get all the materials squared away, if there's anything pending from last time you interacted with Perry. And then we could go from there.
Lucas?
So, to me, that addresses one issue, and that's the trailers. Now you still have to, let the property owner know, okay, what about the cars? They need to be on an approved surface, or do they need to be removed? And if it's not just the, the trailers and the cars, what else is there? And it's a, to me, it's a one, two, three, have these things done. If they're not done in two weeks, city's taking care of it. And it's just that straightforward. Do they get done, or they don't get done?
Are your vehicles up there on an approved surface right now?
No.
Okay, we're gonna have to get that squared away.
Spring was and everything, but I can start moving gravel in there. So, I know that's what, what you want next. I mean, I can do that.
Needs to be on an approved surface, Gary, otherwise you're just running a junkyard, okay? So, let's do that, as a second thing, if you're sure that's gets squared away.
Okay, so I have cars on an approved surface, uh, behind that fence that he has, which most of the, pretty much those vehicles are behind the fence right now, from what I could.
Yeah, I mean, it's behind the fence. And that's what I was gonna work on next, was putting gravel down. If that's what you guys want, well, I mean, that's what I was gonna do myself. If you want that first step started, I can do that. And I'll get to start working on the permit too. Get that cleared.
I'd say it's all the above.
What type of, uh, materials do you have in the trailers? What type of materials do you have in the trailers?
Building materials, you got plywood, doors, stuff that I recycled from NDSU, that big thick doors that they were throwing out. And that's all gonna go into the home. All interiors.
Building supplies.
All the trailers are full of building supply.
It's all, all per building materials, for building a home. And I've been collecting that stuff for ten or twelve years with hopes of building something else. I bought it probably like twenty-two years ago.
And I think that's the concern, is that it's, the timeframe has been so long, that two weeks, I mean, it's hard to believe that much is gonna happen since it hasn't been.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to, to Don then, and, and see once, if he can start out there and start getting the groundwork done for the. First, gotta put the footings down, so you've got to stake all that out first, and, and start that. And he knows where it's gonna be laid out. I got a post out there where it's laid out. I've got the, the plans and everything, and Perry approved that, where, where it's gonna be the layout of it.
Okay.
But I don't have a building permit, so.
Alright.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I'm hearing a motion out of this, it would be to table this nuisance abatement hearing until the city council's August twentieth meeting. And within that time, the property owner must obtain a building permit and move all the cars onto an approved surface.
Correct. At least that's from my understanding.
Yeah.
Still?
Okay. Do you think that is achievable?
Yeah, I'll work on it.
Alright.
Okay.
So, we have your motion.
Yep, motion to table this topic based on the recommendation from Mr. Lucas.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do you want me to come back here then on the twenty-first too?
Probably, bring in what you got, you know, let's make sure you got a permit, and let's take some pictures, or we'll have our guys take pictures of it, I want them to see that approved surface. Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Alright, budget time.
Good Brian, are you able to pull up SharePoint though?
No, I can't.
Nope.
Okay.
Displaying, I think it's, it's all.
That, that just makes it quicker, so.
I know. We gotta go the hard way.
Well, you both, everybody has their computers in front of them there, um.
So, we can view this way?
Yeah, what I'll do is provide highlight of the budget, and then if you have any questions, feel, please feel free to ask. Uh, with the twenty nineteen draft budget, uh, you'll see, this information is laid out very different compared to years past. Uh, also, there shows a significant, well, I would label as significant increase in the revenues for next year. Uh, but if you do look deeper into the budget spreadsheet, it is, there, there are some activities that are occurring before that just, we didn't have reflected in here. The big question everybody asks is, are, is the mill levy going to go up, or the levy going to go up? Now, in North Dakota, they're getting rid of saying mill levy. They still keep the concepts, but in regards to your action with the public, uh, they don't advertise it as a mill levy. Our mill currently, I believe, is sixty point zero eight mills, and we do not have any intentions to increase that. We are trying our best to keep that number.
Flat.
Flat, and trying to go with whatever estimates we get from the county. We're asking for updates frequently on what that number is. Uh, what we put in the draft budget is eight hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred seven dollars. That would keep the mills the same, based on the latest projection that we are given from the county. Uh, Paul Ficassi was here a few months ago and presented that information to the council. So, you're able to see, we're keeping that number the same. That number will likely go down by a couple thousand dollars, uh, to keep the mills the same, or our best attempt to keep the mills the same. So, we're gonna have a little bit of shuffling. Uh, what we're looking for tonight from council is to approve the draft budget, and proceed with allowing staff to, or order to submit the certification levy. Is that correct, Vince?
And the, the, the property tax revenue lineup is based on the mill levy, if it stays exactly as it is today?
Yes, based on the property valuations. Uh, we did have an increase from this year to next year. That increase was due to property valuations within the sale of the horse. It was not due to an increase in the mill levy. Uh, but what this does is when you, and I'll get more in detail of the budget in just a minute, but telling you the end goal. By appro, when you do, if you do approve the draft, that twenty nineteen budget, it will stay draft. And what it does is it locks in, locks in that number, saying we are not going to exceed that. We cannot come back after that approval. We can't come back and say, no, we want to raise the mills up five mills. We can't do that. Once you lock it in, we lock it in, then we could go down, but we can't go up. So, that's the big end goal for tonight, is locking the mill through the, uh, uh, certification levy. Like I mentioned, for property tax revenue, it went up from last year about a hundred thousand dollars. That was all due to property valuation changes. Also, we had additional houses that hit the tax rolls.
Yes, right, so that's primarily from additional tax on homes. Uh, but it, there were some tax revaluations.
Yeah, I believe there are some general adjustments that the county does.
Oh, so it's just the normal, the normal adjustment that the county did, it wasn't anything that, you know, because they're, they're trying to play catch-up with home values anyway.
Yep, and that's, that's not reflecting the catch-up. The catch-up is going on currently. Uh, property players are, are in town, doing all that. Uh, this is more of just the general adjustments and the additional houses on the tax rolls. Um, for state aid distribution, I'm just gonna highlight some of the bigger areas that stayed the same. We're not projecting any increase on that.
We were told by the state that it was actually gonna decrease.
You'll, you'll see a category that says miscellaneous.
I haven't heard anything, have you?
Not yet.
You'll see a category that says thirty thousand for miscellaneous. That's basically, uh, to cover costs, like, where employees for their health insurance. If they have families, or kids, or anybody on the health insurance plan, or spouse, they pay their share. That shows as a revenue to reflect that change. Basically balances out the health insurance.
So, that, that, it's money that we spent in the past.
Yes, we just reflect it that way. Yeah, and then, city sales tax, transfer economic development, that's reflected as a revenue. That is the state's sales tax funds, twenty-five percent of that needs to go for economic development purposes. So, what we're showing is the revenue in for next year would be put towards economic development pers, purchase, or purposes next year. That was a big change.
That was, that was, uh, assuming, assuming.
Assuming a revenue of three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, utility franchise fee, that's just to get the water and sewer utilities to contribute towards the general fund a little bit. Uh, historically, it, it's been working the other way around, so we need to clean that up, because general fund shouldn't be covering for the utilities.
Yep. If that's squared away.
Uh, we show an increase in building permits. Uh, we do anticipate increases in the nu, the frequency of buildings, uh, within horse next year. And we may bring back adjustments to building permit costs for a discussion with council.
What assumption is made for that dollar off? Because that's a pretty significant increase from last year.
That's based on, we're looking at, if the new school happens, if any of these new developments that are, uh, breaking ground this fall and next spring hit the floor running, we're anticipating about a hundred houses.
Was there a house number that, I mean, was there an assumption that was made, is somewhere around, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty houses?
If, if you look back at, um, I believe it's two thousand sixteen, the revenue was a hu, just under a hundred forty thousand dollars. And that was for under fifty houses.
Okay.
So, making that assumptions of if we do get any commercial in place, or have any, if the schools happen, or we hit our target for houses built next year, I mean, we're anticipating to exceed that. But we wanted to be so, a little conservative. Another big change, and I'm highlighting the revenues a little more in depth, and the expenditures for general fund, more in depth than what I will for everything else. Uh, interest income, council about a month and a half ago decided to begin a transition to Starion Bank. Uh, with that transition, we will be gaining a one point four percent interest rate on savings accounts. And by just how we handle those funds, uh, the fifteen thousand dollars of interest isn't even near what we do anticipate, but we want to be conservative on that. So, it's a big change, because we're, we keep more funds in the savings, not in the checking, and then just transfer funds over when we need to. Just more cash management. One, another area that has not been reflected in the past has been, uh, park loan, or park board loan for one of their buildings. That's a thirty thousand dollar loan, so that's just showing that repayment.
Essentially, so.
Repaying the city.
Shows its revenue, but it's going right out again.
So, with, with all these different adjustments and showing these dollars, we do show a very significant increase in, uh, in our overall budget for the revenues, but like I said, it's capturing dollars that we have been capturing in the past, or anticipate due to growth. Um, or the sales tax reflecting those expenditures to, or funds too. That brings us to one million three hundred ninety-seven thousand nine hundred seven dollars. Any questions on the revenue? No? Okay. What we have different for next year in the proposed budget staff, there are some adjustments. Uh, mainly, the adjustments for the salary staff between this year and the next year is, uh, my position wasn't completely covered for the entire year this year. In addition, the community development director wasn't covered completely for this year. Those positions are going to be covered entirely for next year, so that's the, and then.
You don't want to part your thing?
No. I kinda like this. Um, but anyways, that accounts for those positions being full-time for the entire year next year. And then some adjustments for like cost of living and areas like that. Uh, what you see is funds aside for part-time. That would be for creation of a new position, which would be a communication specialist. That would be for creation of a new position, which would be a communication specialist type position. An administrative assistant to where they could really help us have one centralized person for horse happenings. Uh, website, updates and maintaining that and, uh, Facebook, things like that. And then helping out with different tasks around the office too. Uh, by having that centralized contact, it helps create a consistent message from city because right now it's a tag team effort. I know Brian, that gets quite a bit his time helping out with Facebook and the website. And I help, I try to help out with the webs, or with, uh, Facebook and Mateo helps quite a bit, so it's spraying out those tasks. Um, and then the deferred compensation, there's funds put aside with that. I said deferred compensation or pension plan, uh, just have separated those costs out.
And it, that's money that we were spending in the past, it's just breaking out as a separate line item.
What you'll see different with this year, with this budget too, is in the future, when we're reporting how we're doing, you're going to see categories. You're not going to see all the details unless you ask for the details, it's trying to keep, keep you out of the weeds. And keep you focused on the categories and the bottom line, how we're doing budget wise. So we have sections of contractuals, commodities, uh, and I do see some cleanups on my spreadsheet here, but.
But overall from a.
It breaks it up.
But overall from a staff perspective, it's one, the net add is one full time position and one part time position for next year.
Basically, yes. Yep. Um, insurance does look a little different, that's because we're reflecting the costs, true cost, how much is for the state to pay the bill. And then the reimbursement actually is lower than that. Professional services, that is a combination of our costs for law enforcement, attorney, engineer, audit. It's a variety of different areas, all labeled within professional services. And then software, hardware maintenance, this is the big one, this is kind of the big area for, uh, the budget this year, or for twenty nineteen. Would be to include, uh, the purchase of Black Mountain Cowning software. That has been a goal for the city for quite a while, and I believe it'll even come as a recommendation from our audit, which you'll see in the near future. I believe, Vance, do you recall, have they brought that up? It was to revisit our cowning software. So.
So one question, so the printing cost going down ten thousand, that's a pretty significant drop, what's, what's driving the.
Our costs included before the mailing, so I separated out the mailing.
Oh, so you just broke it out, okay, that's what I was wondering, if it was broken out into two separate line items, okay.
Yep. And then also under software maintenance, that includes, uh, a building permit code enforcement type software. To really help streamline and bring us up to the next steps for interacting with builders and residents on all those different areas. Uh, that has similar cost to Black Mountain, so we're looking at around fifty to fifty-five thousand for that.
Do you know what that software is called?
Uh, the one that we're looking at is SmartGov. Uh, it's from a company called Paladin or Dude Solutions, uh, but we are looking at some other options too. But that's the one that we've looked at the most in depth. Uh, so we're looking to see what's most feasible for us and what will meet the needs. Um. I'm just going to run through really quick here on others.
So the equipment maintenance and repair, that went down, but that, those expenditures were just moved somewhere else, correct?
Typically, yes, and they were spread out between the water and waste wa- or water, wastewater.
Oh, so that's included in, in that separate budget, okay.
Yep, they're separate budgets, that's another, a big difference from previous budgets is we actually budgeted for the enterprise funds. In the past, we have not done that. Uh, the last couple of things, there's a vehicle purchase, uh, that would be mainly for community development and city hall staff. It'd be more of a, uh, not truck, really more of a economic runner if some, if we have to go to any trainings or conferences or meetings or anything. There's a city vehicle for some of that activity. Uh, the seventy-five thousand for economic development, that was from the city sales tax. This is a total, totally new ballgame for the city to be able to have funds dedicated for that purpose. And it gives us opportunity to be able to match grant funds. Uh, we're currently working on a grant application to get some funds to help with the marketing of the city. Uh, and we're trying right now to see if we could use the costs for the community development director position to be the match for those dollars. So this gives us ability to match grants and leverage that money even further. Another area is community engagement, this would cover things like Bean Days, Bean Days, uh, uh, the Streets Alive. Any other activities like that, that was for twelve thousand five hundred. And then having a contingency and then transferring some funds to streets to be able to truly capture our costs in streets. Water, sewer, keep in mind, we had some rate changes and adjustments. Uh, those are our best, really our best guess to see where we're at on those costs. But they're going to have to refine themselves out as we see how the new rates impact the city. The reason I say that is because we do know that there are homes out there that do not have water meters. We know that some folks do not report their reads, only about, would you say thirty to forty percent report? About thirty to forty percent of the user, or residents out there that use city water actually report their meter reads. So we're not capturing a true, true picture of.
We're not going to really know that until November, December.
So as we get those readings, we will get more information and that will help us refine our budgets in the future. If it is off, we will revisit that with the council about this time next year.
Yep.
Let me see if there's any other areas important on those. We do have individual budgets for vector or mosquito control. And then also forestry, those are new, uh, fees tied to October first, when the new rates kick in. So I do have funds dedicated for that. Uh, it's important note too, that all the street, or all the public work staff. They are covered under strictly the highway fund, water and sewer. Their wages are covered under those, not under general fund, general fund does cover their benefits though. And then we do have funds dedicated for, um, equipment, directly thirty-two thousand dollars, system improvement. If you see that, that is a new area, that accounts for funds for street patching, uh, minor street repairs, things like that. Anything more serious, like a bigger mill overlay would be a project that would fall under capital improvements program. But like I said, street patching, just law and then things here or there, that would be under the system improvement under the highway fund. Okay, and.
Actually, I'm just looking at the, the city sales tax fund summary. Um, there actually is a, at the bottom, you showed like a, well, we haven't really, uh, spent any of that money at this point, so there is a.
Yeah, and, and I'm working on those fund balances.
So you're getting those numbers in from twenty eighteen so that we can just like some of that.
Yep. So I'm working on the summary pages more to be able to have that cleaner for you, more accurate. But I'd like to have those numbers be the most accurate for you at the time of the final budget, so. But thank you for bringing that up. Uh, with that, uh, what, like I said, if you had any other questions, if you're tied to the individual funds, I tried to be pretty thorough of what we're covering.
One thing that I don't see in the solid waste, uh, would we cover like the, uh, the grass, uh, the. Compos- the composites or grass and tree. Cause that's being paid for in a separate way, correct? Uh, for waste management to remove those roll offs. Uh, we should probably reflect that on solid waste.
Yep.
As an expenditure and decide where we're going to fund that amount, so that's, that's a separate question, right now we're funding it out of the general fund.
That would likely.
I was thinking that would fit in the solid waste area because it's, it's a waste management expenditure, they're invoicing us for that, or we should track that as a separate line item. Versus how much we're spending on that line versus right now, how much do we end up paying on an annual basis? Cause I believe, Vance, we are being invoiced for that separately, correct, for those at that point?
And we do have waste management working on our costs for the solid waste, like spring cleanup. Uh, and then also they are working on co- they gave us rates, but not usage for, um, the dumpsters tied to the compost. So they are working on those numbers and we should be gaining them soon.
Uh, yeah, actually, is, does that twenty nineteen amount include the, uh, rate change? Uh, I think our contract is up in twenty nineteen. So I think there, uh, our contract is up, so I think there may be an increase.
We are working on the.
So you, you're talking to.
Yep, we are talking to waste management and working on a contract, the contract, uh, the draft. Any increases actually looks fairly favorable for the city and residents.
Too bad?
No.
Okay.
Uh.
But this reflects that?
It, it doesn't reflect it in complete detail as we're, once we get those numbers for waste management, then we can refine it. Uh, keep in mind, when you set the numbers, that's for the general fund for the property tax. It isn't for the enterprise really as much, so we're able to work with those.
So I guess to go back to the compostable area, would we expect that if we're going to make any changes in our funding? Any improvements to deal with the grass and trees that we would fund that out of this budget area?
We could.
I, I would sort of break it out of here.
Yep.
Cause that way, that way it, it falls into that waste management expense slash, you know, then we could decide how we're going to transfer funds or how we handle that in the future.
Okay.
But I would, but I'm assuming we are going to, cause that, right now we've got it as a capital improvement item, right? Does it stay as a capital improvement item or should it go here as more of an operational expense? I don't know, so it's a question.
Okay. It does make sense to put it under there, because then you're able to capture your costs tied to that activity and that's the intention of breaking up these funds. Uh, so you can see how many, what dollars are going in towards that.
Right.
So. But when we do have the updated numbers from waste management, we can reflect that into there. Uh, like I said, they're just giving us the, they're working on the tonnage for us and, uh, we're looking at options for like the spring cleanup, the spring cleanup. Currently, we do a curbside pickup, but, uh, we could do like a modified approach or a complete.
See, that could be another line item, we just have to spring clean up this, again, it's another line item, budget line item, there'll be just. This is how much we're spending now, we can make a decision where those funds come from, but it's another expenditure.
Before, before the spring cleanup, it could be a change in how it's done.
Right.
So we're looking at where our cost benefits are like that, and that would be presented to council too, when we have the contract, uh, drafted as a, for a proposal for consideration. So you can see the options, so. Uh, we have, other cities are facing changes in the cost of recycling and garbage fees. I've seen some that have had recycling double, triple in costs, that, that's being passed on to residents in other areas. Uh, but we, in talking about waste management, uh, they don't foresee that happening for us. So that's very good news and actually, uh, the rates are cheaper than what some cities are compared to Lake Fargo. So that's great news for us. Any other questions about budget?
On the, on the highway summary, um, so you have a general fund transfer there, forty-five thousand. Uh, is that truly just general fund or is that a portion of sales tax?
That is general fund.
Okay, so.
The only sales tax money that would be reflected in general fund is the seventy-five thousand, which is reflected exactly in the economic development. Uh, the other, under the sales tax area, the two hundred twenty-five thousand shows it as a transfer to CIP.
Right.
So it would be for those CIP general projects, which is sales tax.
My question is, do we continue to transfer the, the balance of whatever funds for CIP application? Or do we apply some portion of that to this? We have, I guess we haven't discussed that as an option, but that would be.
Yep.
And that, I was thinking it might be a good idea to have a line item here as a sales tax, this year we might just plan it to be zero. Right, but just saying that, that, that is an option for us to transfer some of the sales tax to apply to this.
Yeah.
For expenditures that are more operational.
Yep. Uh, this approach really just keep, trying to keep it clean to where we could tie it truly a hundred percent to infrastructure, there's no doubt about that. By tying it to the CIP, in other words, the intentions by doing that.
Cause I mean, you, you could make the same thing about the, you could make the same statement about the water.
Yeah.
Where, where we would choose to take some of the sales tax revenue and apply it to which of the.
Yeah.
Infrastructure.
Yeah.
Funds.
Okay. Are there any other questions? There's a lot of information, like I said, it's a very different approach than we've done before, typically just tackled the general fund. Uh, this isn't a hundred percent where, you know, this game is to where, like to propose for our budget in the future, but that's going to take a couple of years to get there. Um, and this is also applying our financial model, the A U two, A U two S has been working on with us. Uh, applying a lot of the concepts identified in there, we've used that for quite a few of the projections. So if you're wondering where a number came from, then most likely it'll add up within those projections. There's a few areas that were bumped up because of assumptions were different at that time versus now, like building permits for example, but. Uh, majority of the numbers are based off of that.
So the motion you are looking for right now is to essentially at a high level approve the proposed budget. Which has a guideline to keep the mill levy at zero weight increase for twenty nineteen.
Basically, I'm looking for, uh, let me find my recommendations for you, so I can tell you exactly. Approve the draft twenty nineteen budget of, keeping in mind this is a draft. However, approving it to where the property tax revenue is not to exceed eight hundred seventeen thousand eight hun- eight hundred seven dollars. That we would submit to Cass County on the certification of levy.
And right now, this budget meets our priorities that we have stated already for all the things, positions and so forth that we had already included, so.
Yep, it, it has captured pretty much every area that council has addressed that would be captured in a budget. Uh, the areas that are not addressed are CIP items. And they're, they would be captured when we develop our.
Will be planned separately.
When we revisit our CIP.
Yeah.
And typically you do your budget and then revisit, or then the CIP visit that afterwards. Cause it's hard to do a budget and a CIP at the same time. It's just a lot of, it'd be information overload.
So I would make a motion to approve the proposed draft budget for twenty nineteen.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea has a second. Do we need to do a roll call on this one, or do we just approve it? Vance, you know?
I do it to be safe.
Fair enough. We'll, we'll roll call vote, uh, Brian?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
There we go. Motion pass.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you Brent for that. You've got another one here too.
I have a couple, but I'm going to be quick on these other two.
All right, go.
Okay. The item for you is a consideration of a cost of living adjustment for employees. This is very reflective of, for employees from the time of two, the two thousand seventeen calendar year. So anybody employed by the city currently on staff, two thousand seventeen, uh, would receive this proposed cost of living or COLA. COLAs are not given out every year, neither are performance raises, it's not a set, we're going to do this for sure. But the city has not done performance evaluations for two thousand seventeen, we don't have a set process for that. We are, since we are currently working on developing a set process for performance evaluations, we felt it would be best to do a COLA. Instead of the performance evaluation. Uh, once we have our performance evaluation process hand, or developed and approved by the council, that is what Jenna Wilm, our HR consultant is working on. Uh, you've met her at one of the last council meetings, her last council meeting, she presented the employee handbook. That her next task is to develop that performance appraisal process. And we felt it'd be in the best interest to not just try to put something together, knee jerk reaction. Let's just wait until we have what we're going to use in the future to be applied for performance evaluations. So this is a cover of the two thousand seventeen year, and like I said, it would be a two point five percent COLA. Uh, that has a total impact on the city for this year of just a hair over seven thousand dollars, seven thousand dollar, seven thousand two dollars and thirty-two cents. So that's the total impact. So that's the total impact that it would have on the city.
And we have space within the current budget?
We should have.
To cover this.
We, we should, uh, but if we, like, we're going to be bringing back, we're going to be bringing an amendment to the budget for a lot of different things.
I, I thought, I thought we had, I, I remember discussing this, but I thought we had approved it already a while ago.
But like I said, this would be.
We never actually proved it, so.
Yeah, and this would be reflective for the two seven, two thousand seventeen year. It would retro back to January one, two thousand eighteen, so with the employees on staff, they would.
Right.
They were from two thousand seventeen with a, basically a little bump in their paycheck.
Makes sense.
When their upcoming paychecks. It's that next payroll, but it may be this one or it may be the following payroll.
Right, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the two point five percent cost of living increase for, well, it's actually fiscal year twenty eighteen. You had written down twenty seventeen, but it's actually fiscal year twenty eighteen.
It's, uh, two point seven.
Retro back to January one twenty eighteen.
Yeah, well, yes. They haven't been given a raise since January one, two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
But.
But it's a full increase for FY twenty eighteen.
It would be retro back to.
To January one twenty eighteen.
Yes, which it, it says towards the bottom of the first paragraph there.
Okay.
Okay, so I got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea has a second. Suppose this involves money. Brian?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
See, that one's quicker.
Yep.
Fair, next one.
I'll try to be even quicker on this one. Uh, Bean Days, as you're aware, uh, Chel- Chelsea is working on trying to help push Bean Days along. In the past, as my understanding says, helped out a little bit with Bean Days. However, what you'll see in the two thousand, you saw in the two thousand nineteen budget, we have money actually dedicated for community engagement, which will help out activities like this. Uh, what we're proposing is to help out the Bean Days committee, help them be able to make this as good as they can. Uh, with a contribution of five, up to five thousand dollars from the city. So if they only need twenty-five hundred, they only get twenty-five hundred. It isn't just to set money into account. It's whatever their expenses are tied to this. They're working hard to try to find sponsors for this. Uh, trying to work with businesses and individuals around town to keep the costs in mind and spread the costs out. Have that be a whole community event. Uh, I do foresee this as being, uh, expanded upon, or the event being expanded upon in future years. Uh, the dollar amount in future years, that'd be up to the council, but this is just really kind of viewed as seed money to help Bean Days for this year. Uh, like I said, as a cost not to exceed the five thousand.
So, um, I sent out about fifty sponsorship letters with the draft of the flyer, which I think came together pretty well. Um, the letter package and hopefully that'll get some people interested.
That's right.
In sponsoring, so we got a, uh, area for their names and stuff. Um, so I did that. We've been, you know, working really quickly on this, so I just didn't know what to expect with numbers and, you know, what we would need. Um, I'm thinking our, um, expenses will be around thirty-five hundred for the event. So we will see, I guess, where the sponsorship goes, but like I said, it was really short-term notice for this.
I think it's a good, could use money for this kind of event. It's our signature event of the year, so.
And this is not unusual. Other cities do the same thing to help. And this is, this is a citywide event, so I really don't see any issue with this.
And then I did talk to, um, the Lions and Park Board and the, um, big herbs about chipping in for the street town. So we can get that free admission, which I think will be really nice.
Vance, you had something?
Yeah, Chelsea, you said you sent out fifteen letters to facilitate funds?
Fifty.
Have you heard back from them?
Well, I sent them on Thursday or Friday morning I sent the letters.
No response?
So, I mean.
They're trying to escape them now. They're absorbing it now, yeah.
Um, you know, I was hoping maybe the flyer and stuff would get people a little excited to be a part of it. Um, and then I did include, um, stamped address envelope for them to mail a check.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Motion to approve expenditure up to five thousand?
Okay. Get a second. Chelsea does a second. I think we're spending money again. Brian?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
All right, motion proves. Brian? Okay. Yeah, right.
You're gonna start doing rock, paper, scissors.
Kidding.
Go first, guys.
All right, Lucas, you're up to bat.
Up again. So Mr. Mayor, uh, this is the land dedication ordinance.
Okay.
That you asked our office to.
Hey, you did pretty colors this time around. I commend you for that, man. That's awesome.
Can't see the black anymore. It's not even put right in there. Um, so what this, what this ordinance does, it just kind of reworks the language of it to allow, um, land dedication and new developments to be utilized for not only, uh, park projects, um, it can also be used for municipal facilities. So if the city has something that, uh, they would like, um, property dedicated for, they can then request that from the developer rather than it just being, um, strictly for park use. So, uh, that you'll see right away in the title. It just switches it to public purposes. Um, and then kind of going throughout, it adds municipal facilities, um, into the ordinance. And expands on the different uses, like, so if you go to, uh, seventeen point eight, uh, point ten six. It's designated for, uh, landfill parks, playgrounds, public open space, public trails, municipal facilities, park facilities, and/or related facilities. So that opens it up where, um, it's not just automatically just for a park.
Right.
So this is essentially making it consistent with other land dedication ordinances?
Correct, and the process is the same. The only thing that is being done with this ordinance is it's including municipal facilities.
Right, that's what this is about.
So it's.
That makes sense.
That's what's going on with this. Um, this is a public hearing. The planning commission had a public hearing on this. Um, there was no comments on it and the planning commission, uh, was all in favor of this ordinance modification or this ordinance amendment. Um, so now tonight it's been published in the paper for a public hearing in front of the city council.
Okay, so I'll open this up for a public hearing. Anybody got any comments or questions on the, this ordinance change? Okay. This is pretty much all we, I mean, this is what we had talked about here. It's been in the paper, so this is just basically going through the motions. All right, Russell? Okay, well, hearing no comments, I'll, uh, close the public hearing then, um.
Motion to approve the first reading?
Okay, Brian does a motion to approve the first reading. Can I get a second?
I, I was just gonna add, uh, I did have a conversation with the Park Board Chair.
Okay.
This morning, uh, letting them know about this and that we are working to follow the ordinance to a T. Cause in the, in the past, when developments have occurred, they have basically just been able to just go with whatever the dedications were, cause they really, there weren't really many options. Uh, this makes it to where it's a formal process that they need to follow, just like anybody else, to request park dedication, funds, anything like that. So it gives the city a lot more control too. So I just wanted to add that, so there has been some communication with the Park Board, uh, so they are becoming aware of this.
Okay, good. Yeah, and I'm sure there'll be more conversations about this as we go to, because some of these, some of these things are being followed a little more closely than they have in the past, so. All right, so Brian made a motion. Get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea, you have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So then we, well, we wait two weeks for this then?
Uh, yep, this will be, the second reading will be at the next meeting.
All right.
Perfect. Uh, the next one is, uh, information and then it'll take some action from the city council if it desires to do so. There apparently was a cancellation of Liz Pendants and self mental, Liz Pendants filed with the court. So basically kind of cleaning up that lawsuit for Livy's Acres. Um, I reached out to all three attorneys involved in that and made them aware that this was filed with the court. And if they had any issues, you know, let me know, cause then I want to present it to the city council. And then the applicant would know if they can proceed with development of that. So basically, the city council, a few months back, halted all, um, development out there until this lawsuit was figured out. And that way the city wouldn't get, um, drawn into the lawsuit and that's why we have this party tonight. So what I would ask, um, from the city council is to direct, um, city officials to allow them to just begin that application process again with the applicant.
Do you want us just to approve the cancellation or do you want us to do an improvement or approve that we can, they can move forward?
Yeah, approve that they can move forward.
All right.
Yeah, make a motion to approve, move forward, yeah.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. Get a second?
Second.
May I ask a question?
Ask a question, go.
At what point do they start now?
From the beginning.
From the, okay.
Just cause I don't know where it's at and it's, we're gonna want a title opinion just to.
Okay.
I think it should start from the beginning, cause that, that reset.
I wanted to ensure that that's what we were doing, because you're, you're not aware of this, but we have worked on this property for about seven or eight years. And we have zero memory at this point even where we're at.
Yep, I'd say it's a reset because of what we went through here at the lawsuit. It's start over.
Totally.
To let you know where this one is at, before, just before the lawsuit, the only activity from the city that, at my knowledge, was just a pre-application meeting with the developer for this new subdivision. So that's the only thing from the staff side that has happened. And then right after that pre-application meeting is when the lawsuit happened and everything was frozen. So it'll probably just restart from there, or restart even with the pre-application meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's a complete start over, because the other thing is too, they requested sewer from the city. As far as I'm concerned, that's a reset as well.
And it's gonna be a total, in the zoning yet even, yes?
The zoning's done. That was an ordinance that was approved by the city council.
I, I think what you're gonna find is the property that they're doing is gonna be changing some of the.
And they might have to rezone it, but then they would have to just go through that process.
But that's why we'll have that pre-application meeting again, so those conversations can occur based on any updated information too. So.
Okay. So I got a motion? Got a second?
You have a second, so.
Okay, and then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, now this.
We'll let them know that and we'll get on with that.
It sounds good. I'll let the applicant know tomorrow or Brent, if you want to do that.
Okay, all right, we'll touch base.
Sounds good. So Mr. Mayor, the next one I have is, is a lot of resolutions relating to the various improvement districts that are going on in the city. So a lot of this is housekeeping stuff that follows the, the century code on the type of resolutions that need to be approved by the city council. Um, so the item twelve, this can all just be done in one motion, but it's resolutions directing the levy of assessments. That's just saying that the city had this project, the city, uh, the project cost this much. Now the city needs a special assessment commission to levy those assessments onto the properties that are involved in that improvement district. So we have, uh, Street Improvement District two thousand fifteen-three, Water and Sanitary Sewer Improvement District two thousand sixteen-two, Water Street, uh, or Water Sanitary Sewer and Street Improvement District two thousand seventeen-one, and Sanitary Sewer Improvement District two thousand seventeen dash two.
And of course, everybody knows what those are.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't remember what those were.
Um, first.
In layman's terms, Jimmy, why don't you tell us?
Uh, two thousand fifteen-three is Seventy-third paving, South and Fifty-second Avenue.
Okay.
Two thousand sixteen-two is the extension of Arrowwood Water and Sewer from the tracks to the west on Liberty, uh, east on Liberty Lane.
Yep, okay.
That's twenty sixteen?
Yeah. And then, uh, twenty seventeen dash one is Law's River, twenty seventeen dash two is the connection of Fargo to Deer Creek, so they assess it all.
Okay. Do you need a, need a motion to approve, correct? Or do you need to do any more than that?
Motion to direct the Special Assessment District to initiate their action.
Resolution directing levy of assessments.
And so move. Sorry, you was meeting on Thursday?
Yes.
So move.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you said they're meeting on Thursday, Vance, right?
I believe at three o'clock, yeah.
Okay.
So the next, uh, resolution I have is a resolution receiving, uh, petition for improvements and this is for, uh, Terra Gardens. Um, it was received in March, but this is, you have this to just say that the resolution, the necessity is not required. Um, so this is just saying, the property owner came to you and said, will you please put these improvements in? And then the city got that, like I said, in March. So it's just a resolution saying that the city did receive that petition.
All right, get a motion for that?
So move.
Okay, Brian?
I don't remember that conversation, but.
Okay.
I'm sure we did.
It's the reason that Terra Gardens Improvement District was created.
I'm sure it's there. Can I get a second? Okay, Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, uh, then I threw, uh, thirteen A in there. Um, we need a resolution determining that sufficient protests were not filed for Street Improvement District two thousand seventeen dash seven and two thousand, Street Improvement District two thousand seventeen dash eight and Jim, both would be.
Maple Grove and Workwood South.
And so for, for those, the resolution necessity was published in the paper. Um, and then the city had the protest hearing and there were insufficient protests, um, at that hearing. And so the project moved on. Once again, another housekeeping item that needs to be done, so I can put it in file.
We just need, they're, we're approving the contract.
You're, you're approving the resolution determining that there weren't sufficient protests.
You're stating that there wasn't anyone against it?
I thought we did that.
We had the hearing, we didn't have the resolution.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so can I get a motion?
So move.
Housekeeping.
I'll make the resolution.
Okay, so Brian makes the motion, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. More housekeeping.
Keep on keeping on. Uh, the next one is for Water Street, or Water Sanitary Sewer and Street Improvement District two thousand eighteen-three. This is Terra Gardens project. We need some items to be checked off the old list before I'm comfortable recommending that the city approve, um, the resolution awarding the bid and approving the, the contract between the city and the contractor. The applicant is here. Um, I'm sure they'd like to discuss that. But like I said, um, the items that need to still be checked off, the plot needs to be recorded, which I have it here. So I just need to obtain signatures for that and then our office will handle recording. The improvement district agreement still needs to be signed. What that improvement district agreement says is the city will construct this project and obtain funds on behalf of the developer for the project. And then, um, to do so, the city needs some assurance that the developer, in case any of those lots go in default, they can cover it. So that improvement district agreement requires a letter of credit. And that letter of credit is fifty percent of the, uh, engineer's estimate of the construction costs. And so we're waiting on the improvement district agreement to be signed and we're waiting on the letter of credit.
Okay. So, Jack, you wanna get up and talk with?
I don't wanna be here all night, so let's keep it condensed. Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, we do have, uh, we're, we're working with Blackridge Bank and I do believe that the letter of credit will be ready by tomorrow. Uh, we were expecting to see it today, but, uh, by the end of the day, they didn't, they didn't have it for us. And I received, uh, correspondence from our banker that, that asked me for some language to insert into the letter of credit, so we should be able to provide that, uh, by tomorrow. Regarding the improvement district agreement, um, we've asked for some proposed revisions to the agreement um, last week that we're waiting on from the city, so. Um, I guess we'll sign that agreement when that's in final form.
And that was presented to the developer already, uh, last week, so the city was not holding up anything on this one. The proposed changes, the city cannot agree to the second part, saying that developer gets to use the funds however it deems fit, uh, at the end of the project. There's just no way that the city can do that. Um, so that will not be included in the improvement disagreement. The request to change ownership was done, uh, and that was provided last week. And so I'm, I'm just not comfortable, and it's, it's totally up to the city council, but the request was to add a, add language in there that basically says the developer can utilize funds as it deems fit, if there's extra funds.
But that would be considered unusual circumstances, right? We haven't done that before.
It, no, not a chance. It's, it's the city's project, it's the. It, no, not a chance, it's, it's the city's project, it's the city's money, the city determines how it's used. And if there is extra at the end of these projects, it's typically used to pay off the bonds.
Right.
Yeah, so.
And that's, that's how it's done in all of our cities.
Okay. So Jeff, it's an unusual request, why?
So, um, so the improvement district agreement, we received that earlier this month. And, uh, you know, our engineer's estimate came back at three point three million.
Okay.
And, uh, our bits came in approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars underneath that engineer's estimate. Um, so, I asked the city, if we could use the, um, incorporate the cost savings in the bid, um, into the letter of credit and the corresponding bond, bond amount for the city, um, you know, to reduce, to reduce the chance of an overbond situation that we're experiencing in Lost River. Uh, because once the money is borrowed and, you know, it's going to be assessed against the property, regardless of whether there's contingencies that are, that are, um, used up or not. I received an email from, uh, Mr. Hooper on Wednesday indicating that even though we had three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of cost savings, um, we had, the cost of the project has actually increased. And that the city has bonded three point five million dollars for the project. Um, which is forty percent more than the construction. You know, which is worse than, you know, that's over, uh, the city of Fargo as far as, uh, you know, the cost of admin and, and construction engineering. So we, you know, the, the clause that we asked the city to incorporate into the improvement district agreement, which, um, I just received this response back from Mr. Croker a minute ago, um, was that, is that, um, if there are, if there are bonds that are left in the bond, if there are funds that are left in the bond fund, at the end of the project, that the funds can be used for uh, improvements or amenities within the Terra Gardens addition. Um, this is a phased project. You know, that those funds are not tied up in a bond fund, um, and creating, you know, waste inefficiency. Um, and extra specials for the consumer. You know, so, the comment that these are city, this is city money and the city gets to, you know, control how it's spent. We agree with that, except that we're partners in this project. Uh, we certainly have a stake in, in, uh, you know, these, these funds because our lands, our lots are responsible for paying this money back. So we certainly care if, uh, the consumer is forced to pay higher specials. Um, and so, you know, I guess the idea is that these funds, if there's funds left over, I mean, if, if the construction, um, if there's contingencies that are used, um, you know, if there's change orders, unexpected, unforeseeable conditions, and there's not money left at the end of the day, so be it. But if there's, at the end of the day, five hundred thousand dollars left because we've, you know, because we haven't used it, because the project's gone smoothly, I mean, it's an open field. You know, there's no, there's, we've already done soil boring. Uh, there's no utilities that we're probably going to find except the SSL. You know, so, the chance of large change orders, I think is, in my opinion, uh, our design engineers here as well, um, is low, so not counting, uh, requests by the developer. You know, there's a chance that we have money left in that bond fund. And, uh, we would like an affirmation from the city that that money can be used for a different phase or bike path, or landscaping, or things that are within the scope of what we're doing here. Um, so.
Oh, but if those things are within scope, then we should include that in the original project scope. I mean, I, it's, that would, it's part of the challenge, right? Is it, how do we, how do we change the scope of the project after it's been bonded? Cause so, that's what we want to avoid. If, if it's something that we want to do, then let's include that in the plan. Versus saying, okay, well, there's things we might want to do on road, but it, it only if there's money available. So if, if we think we're gonna go over, or I mean, if we, if we think we've bonded too much and we're taking that excess of the pain, the bond back, then the residents get the benefit of that, right? Because their overall special assessment would go down. If we were over by five hundred thousand dollars, like, like, for example, right? Cause we would use that excess to pay down that bond, so that the overall specials that would be owed by the residents when they buy the lots would be lower, correct? And, and so that, so that would be in our best interest to say, if we can lower the overall engineering costs and it comes in X number, a hundred thousand dollars under, whatever, then we pass along that savings to residents that would actually buy those lots. Rather than try and increase the scope to allow, I mean, granted, we love the idea of having other, you know, amenities that go along with it, but if, if those amenities are, we, we feel they should be there, then we should just include it in the overall project. That's my dilemma.
I hate that vision from the forty percent additional, you know, you know, how do you make anything affordable now if we don't find a way to get leaner and raise all these things down? You know, what's the difference in construction, engineering supervision between the city doing it at three fifteen, what I think was the two ten, not to exceed from Lowry, that's a huge number, that's sixty-six percent increase. And then, when there's competition, things are great, and when things are just moved along through this process, the consumer's losing. Trying to get affordable entry level and, I mean, there's enough things the middle class is up against without us beefing up those specials, and maybe thirty grand on a forty by lot. What's the answer? TUDs and, you know, developer controls and trace things down, now it's parking. I'm trying to find a way where we're, we're missing the market and unmarket, you know, month, month and a half with the inventory. So ten, fifteen percent vacancy on apartments, there's a social disconnect. And I think between cities and developers, we're gonna have to get our heads together and figure out however forward we can start to hit this market, or are you just gonna keep seeing that erosion?
Well, the, the question is, your assertion is that the engineering costs for the project are higher than, right, they're higher than anticipated?
Estimated.
Estimated, yeah, what is it? One million extra?
One million extra for engineering costs?
No, for the construction costs.
Hang on a second, Lucas go.
Okay, so I just want to provide some responses to, to what's been said. The improvement district agreement calls for the engineer's estimate of probable cost. Three point three million dollars, that was provided by Lowry Engineering. That was used in the improvement district agreement. That wasn't developed arbitrarily, that was provided by them, that's why it was used. Second, the city uses funds, um, to bond that are based off of what the engineer tells bond councils. So bond council asks for, okay, what expenses do you think you're gonna have? And then those are all categorized, and that's how you get to the amount to bond for, which was based off of the engineer's numbers. Um, another one, Jack's email today came in at five thirty, so to say that I just responded to it now, um, that's ridiculous. Um, and then with all these change orders that keep happening, North Dakota law dictates that the change orders is twenty percent. You cannot exceed twenty percent of the contract price. And so with Lost River, what happened is, it was such a large project that the contingencies were high, and it just happened to be a smooth project. Stuff didn't happen. And so that's why you have that large amount of money that's left over. And so it's, it's one of those things where you don't know, going into these projects, what you're gonna run into. That's why you have a contingency. And then as far as a multi-use path, yes, that's allowed. So if the city wants to put in a multi-use path, uh, in this improvement district, it's broad enough where that would be allowable.
So, and if the estimate that, you know, from the, the bid tabulation came in that far under, then yeah, there's gonna be excess, right? There, there still may be some contingencies that eat into that a little bit. But the intent would be to take whatever savings we get out of the three point three, if we end up bonding for that amount, and pass that back and pay off the, that excess, so that overall, the residents would have to pay a much lower amount based on what's here. So we, we'd rather, we still want to pay that off and make it affordable. I mean, we all want the same thing. You know, we want to pass those savings back on to the residents that are buying those lots. In any way we can do that, let's, we absolutely want to work together to make that happen.
If that money goes back in the end, that extra money like they're saying, what is the concern from you guys? Because if it is going back to pay down the bond, then what's the concern?
If I may, uh, the, um, if that money was used to pay down the bond, I mean, the, the bonds, uh, we're completely happy with that. My understanding is that these are long-term bonds and that there's no prepayment on the bonds. So that, you know, the money sit there, sits there in the bond fund and the bonds are accruing interest at the, at that same time.
We can prepay those things.
Yeah, the city can pay that money. It's just a matter of how much I'm leaving that fund in case there is.
Right.
Default, it's, it's basically a gamble on the city of what are they comfortable with leaving, uh, in the fund.
Uh.
But yes, you're, you're right, it's a twenty-year term on this, so it is a while up.
So e- even if we left the funds there for two years, if something were to happen, it's a contingency, then you would increase a higher interest rate for those, that period. But then say, okay, we're gonna release those extra funds, we're gonna pay down the bond, then the overall interest amount will go down.
It's basically what is the city comfortable with in that fund? Because if there's no money in that fund, it comes out of the city's general fund.
Right. Which is not set that the bid with however much is over for that specific project is for sure going to pay to this development, right? Depends on the city's overall situation. Is that correct?
I, I was told that, um, uh, John Shockley told me that there was no prepayment for a period of eight years on the bonds for Lost River.
I don't know if there's a, if there's a time stamp on that.
What that is, if it is eight years.
I mean, I, I, I kind of, I kind of dealt that, because if, if you went and sold every single lot tomorrow and you took all that money in, why wouldn't you just take the money and pay it off tomorrow? If, if for some reason, you sold every single lot and, you know, all of a sudden you took all that money at one time, why wouldn't you just pay off that lot? You got the money in hand, so, you know.
Well, unless there's something with the bonding agencies that they have some criteria like that.
And there, there could be, it could depend on the project, I'm not sure on that one.
I just recall, yeah, I just recall some conversations where it said, we could pay ahead if we wished, you know. But like you said, you gotta have, should have some in there for contingencies, but.
And I don't know, I don't know what that number is, that's not legal, that's policy, so the city, whatever you're comfortable with leaving in those funds. And not to put Vance on the spot as he comes back, but I don't know, it's traditionally kept in, uh, like an improvement district fund. Um, in the event something else happens, there's a certain percentage.
You know, I'm not sure, I'd have to research that.
So if there's no prepayment for a period of eight years, basically, let's say we borrow three point five million dollars for a project that costs three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we have, you know, five hundred thousand dollars that's sitting there, that's assessed to the property. And maybe that's paid down in, in eight years. Um, during that time, you know, that would be accruing interest at, at whatever your rate is. Um, and then when we do phase two, we're gonna borrow another money, you know, different money. And so, um, you know, that's inefficient. We don't, in private, in private business, we don't borrow money. You know, a lot of extra money that we don't need, we borrow what we need. Because there's costs that's associated with that money. So, uh, you know, what we're asking for is there's mon, if there's money that's sitting in the bond fund that's accruing interest, that we can decide together, I think the proposed language, that upon agreement of the city and the developer, the, the city can use that money for, for amenities. Um, I don't think it's a large ask and, uh, it, you know, what we're dealing with is a si- situation where the city overbanded, in my opinion, by quite some, by quite a bit, uh, for additional protection for the city. Uh, we proposed bonding a lesser amount and then using our letter of credit to cover any sort of contingencies that run over. And also, I did request that this, uh, revision be included in the contract a week, on Wednesday of last week.
So how much money did you recommend that was good, good to be bonded by the city?
Um, the preliminary engineering report had a seven percent contingency number and a six percent engineering number. Um, so when we included that plus survey, uh, we received, um, some numbers from our own surveyor and engineer. And we came up with a two point nine seven million dollar number. Um, the city's number was three point five million.
The city's number that he keeps referring to is based off of numbers that were provided by the engineering.
Right.
And then standard bonding practices that bond council uses for all improvement districts was used to get to the amount of three point five. That ensures that any expense that comes up, the city of course is covered.
That is not true.
Your number might be too close where the city may be paying out of its general fund. If, if there's nothing in there, that's where it's coming from.
Again, that is not true. We had a, we had, in our preliminary engineering report, we had a six percent engineering number and a seven percent contingency number. And the numbers that were provided to me last week, Wednesday, had a, had a ten percent contingency number and a twenty percent engineering number. So.
I'm kind of under the pressure tonight that we're not here, we're, we're not gonna be, to make a decision on this because there's still some verbiage that seems to need to go back and forth.
We need to know the facts.
There's gonna have to be some more information on here.
Has the bond been issued already?
They're working on the, the bonding for this project because it's one of those things where, remember last year with Lost Rivers when construction started and the city needed money? The answer remembers?
Yeah.
And I, I don't know what, what additional information can be provided. The, the contingency of ten percent, that's, that's the standard number that we use. As far as engineering goes, Jim, you know where your percentage comes from?
We, we based it off of a hundred and twenty working days hourly now to exceed its construction, engineering and survey. Uh, we've been full-time inspection, that's something the city has requested in the past. We started it in, on improvement district two thousand fifteen. One was per review, that was the first one, done the same for Lost River, we've done the same for other projects within the city. So, um, that's where that number comes from. The way the bond numbers were started, as I received an email on the twenty-seventh from Representative Lowry Engineering, that had five percent design engineering, which was included in the overall engineering, and one percent for that line of construction on top of what we provided along with seven percent contingencies, the city's standard capacity, and ten percent contingencies reduced to ten percent. A seven and a half percent capitalized interest and a one point five percent bond discount. And then it says an extra hundred and twenty-five thousand for the final overlay. Engineering looked at the final overlay and thought it would be closer to two hundred thousand, because if you looked at the subdivision directly to the west, then the lost element to that subdivision. And right now, we're a little bit concerned if there's gonna be enough, uh, money in that bond to catch that and overlay it. So that was up to two hundred thousand, the guidance of the city engineering. There was some additional, uh, special assessments, added some bond council, added some money. Uh, the bonds are, the markets around the five thousand dollar increments was another thing, and. So anyway, so when I put this together, we started with the numbers provided by the engineer, so. Put in what's, what standard was with the city at the time.
Yeah, so I mean, nothing unusual has taken place here, that's what I'm trying to.
Well, and, and the, the estimates that have come back from, you know, the, from the bid, bids that we received, right? Were, are they that far under from what, I mean, they're, they're under what we had estimated them to be, right?
Uh, yeah, they are under from what we have, if you look at that, I had a memo that's, yeah, basically identified what they were. So, um, if you look at what was originally told of the total project cost, what, from the preliminary report was three point three one seven, and you can look at three point five three, it's a difference of two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. So, less than seven percent, six percent of what they're anticipating was. Now, that doesn't factor in the lower price for the low bidder, but overall project cost is within two twenty-five, so. True bonded to what they anticipated we bonded out.
You're saying the difference, the difference of all, right?
Okay.
If I may, uh, Mr. Mayor? If ten percent is standard, why did we, uh, bond seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand for contingencies for a four point two million dollar contract with Lost River? That's more than ten percent. That's more than ten percent.
I, I, I don't know how to make.
Do you know who came?
Numbers for Terror Gardens here, that's what I can base it off of.
Do you know who came up with that number?
I mean.
It's between engineering and between bond council.
Yep. So. The, the other thing too that I could mention is that this, for Terror Gardens does factor in design engineering, that was not factored into, into Lost River. So that was an addition on top of that for, based on the guidance from the city, so.
If there's, if there's, uh, we, if we can prepayment, then we don't have any sort of issue, but.
So maybe that's the, that's the action. Just let's get some clarity on what are the rules for bond prepayment, if that's possible? And if, and if there is bond prepayment, then I think there's no issue, we can proceed, correct?
Right. If, if, if there's, if we can prepay, then great. If there's not, then we should look at a different format where we either get a line of credit from a bank and refinance with long-term bonds so that we can hit that number on the head and we don't, you know, we don't have inefficiency. Thank you.
Let's find that out first.
Okay.
Just, just see what we got, if we, how far forward we can pay.
So for, for what it's worth, the bids that we have with the contractor expired tomorrow, I believe, we can only hold them for a certain time period. After that, we have to request that they honor the price that would have. I did have some correspondence with the contractor this morning, and they said that if everything goes well tonight, they would like to restart next week, so.
And, um.
Right.
Just kind of on that point.
So what do they mean by where, if everything goes well tonight?
Award the project. If, if the contract would be awarded tonight, they would be wanting to start it for the next week, week and a half.
Could I ask a question?
Go.
Having set through the fiasco of the, of the project starting without the money in hand, I would ask that you never do that again. As a citizen of the city of Horace, I ask that you never start a project without the money in hand already.
It did cause quite a bit of conflict last time around, didn't it?
Yes, it did.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jack?
If I may, perhaps the city could take action on, on this item contingent on a signed improvement district agreement and letter of credit? In case, uh, we can get that issue worked out in the meantime? I mean, I think we'll provide the letter of credit tomorrow and then, you know, if there's prepayment on this bond, then again, we don't have an issue.
I still don't know if we'll have the answers for that. It'll be tomorrow morning or whether we'll have it.
I'm just wondering if we get it done in the next, you know, or we can wait for two weeks.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, John Lawrie, Lawrie engineer, I, I think the, uh, the contractor who did the project would appreciate the opportunity to get started on the anticipated schedule, uh, as Jim recommended, so.
And I don't, I don't deny that that's probably true. It's just we're getting hung up on this here and this guy, this is a monkey wrench that was thrown in, otherwise this would have just gone through and we'd been no issues, right? But now we've gotta deal with this because they want to add these different contingencies in here to go beyond what we usually do. So we have to deal with this. We either have to push this off or we have to come up with some way to handle this tonight. And I would like for the contractors to get on with it too, but when you get monkey wrenches thrown into things like this, we have to handle them.
Well, let's keep in mind that, that improvement district agreement is based on the three point three one seven, not on the, the bond amount of the three point five. So it's lower than that. And so I, I guess I don't know where, where we're hung up, if that's two hundred thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars or the math is on that, less than, than the project cost.
Okay. So what are we, I mean, cause then where are we at tonight? What do we need to do? I'm just trying to figure out, we've gone around.
Just the developer to sign the improvement district agreement and the letter of credit be provided to the city.
Okay.
Cause that covers the city in the event something happens.
But that's what we want, make sure the city's covered, right?
Correct.
That's the key here.
So if there is no penalty for, or if you can pay the bond down right away, then we can move forward in there. We don't need to meet again.
Right. I still don't know where we'd know that.
Well, we can move forward.
Who would be in charge of finding that out?
I can, I just need to ask my boss. He's bond counsel. Um, so yeah, all, all we need for me to be comfortable with awarding the contract tonight is just signing and providing a letter of credit.
Okay, if that's.
And I don't know if the developer's comfortable with that.
We, I mean, we would appreciate a, an approval contingent upon a signed developer's agreement so that we could potentially get that issue worked out in the meantime, but you know, we want to get that issue worked out before we sign it on, an agreement, so.
The issue being whether you can prepay on bond?
Right.
Well, we can see if John's by his phone.
Well, the other, the other is this letter of credit, right? I mean, we don't have that today.
Correct.
Right, that was the other, the other part of that. So I guess if you're comfortable, I mean, right?
It would be contingent upon getting that letter of credit signed.
It's contingent on getting that letter of credit, and you believe that you're gonna, you're days away from getting that.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's, that's the thing, and I hate to hold it up because of, you know, it was one day late, right?
But we want to make sure we protect the city too.
Absolutely. So this is the one sticking point. Why don't we?
Well, it's just, it's.
Table this, table this for ten minutes and see if Mr. Coker can come up with an answer. Get a real ten answer. If you want to just move on to another topic and we'll come back to this.
Yeah, let's do that.
You have an answer?
We'll give him ten minutes, okay? Lucas will give him ten minutes, if not, we'll, but we'll come back in ten minutes.
Sounds good.
Okay, Jim, let's move on to the project status. We'll go through that then.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I don't know, I provided you with a updated spreadsheet. Um, we can hit the high points if you would like. If you have any questions, you can stop me and let me know. So improvement district two thousand sixteen one is the sewer lining that would approve the final lesson for five thousand dollars for two to retainage. That one is, was waiting on a warranty item. There was a top hat sealant, sealer at, uh, Warren Criminals that was repaired in June. So that one we can allow, uh, to be released on that one. Uh, water sewer in Lost River, we'll touch on those change orders next. Uh, the connection to Fargo, I received an email from Cas County Electric this morning that they are planning to have the electrical service and transformer installed at the station at heat by the end of the week. That is the last remaining bit of work besides punchless to get that line operational, so.
So by Friday, they think they'll have, they will throw the switch on her?
We can throw it to test it, to shut it off, to think about it, to throw it again when things are all, so.
Just, just want this.
Yeah, all, all those punchless items are?
Being worked on, not complete.
So this week are the.
It'll be operational, it's supposed to be operational by the end of the week. It's early for Cas County, they said if things change, they'll let me know.
The longest, the longest item is Cas County?
Yes, yes. The rest of it is a detrimental to the project, the kind of stuff that seating, topsoil, et cetera. Pressuring Crossing, guys, improvement estimate number one, that project is about. It is. About six percent com, nope. I'm out of the way. Uh, we're about twenty percent complete on that project. Uh, concrete is, was scheduled to tend to be today. They didn't come in today, so uh, the plan is to still have that done by the end of the week, beginning of next, so that'll put us about a week ahead of schedule. Two weeks before school starts.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just as long as it's done before school starts, that matters.
Yes. I talked to the meters, uh, Excel mechanical, they have the contracts, they're working on the contracts. Next Monday, they'd like to schedule a reconstruction conference.
Next Monday.
Right away after that, so, um, next Monday, the thirteenth, I will schedule a, a meter here. Truck route, we're just waiting on a funding mechanism or if we want to proceed with that. On the spectrum ninety-five percent complete. Maple Lane, we approved progressive estimate number one, that's the one that's about five and a half percent complete. They did finish the second of four valley gutters today. And, uh, they, they're averaging about one a week, maybe a little bit longer time from than that. Towards the middle of the end of this week, they're gonna start cutting the ditches, the best kind of tenant depending upon weather and whatever else, so. I requested an updated schedule from them, haven't received it yet. Northwood Southwood paving is complete, waiting on the steel coat, that's subcontractors, so if they come in, it shouldn't be more than a couple hours to lift there.
Okay.
Uh, Terror Gardens, well, we'll talk about that. So, that's kind of the quick run-through of the status report. Now we get to Lost River change order. We have change order number eight, which is oh, let's drop back here to change order number one for improvement district two thousand seventeen seven, it's Maple Lane. Uh, this was approved by consent agenda, but just to give you a little idea about it, is, uh, seventy-fifth is paved up to Maple Lane and then is paved through Maple Grove subdivision. And as part of this project, instead of being able to drive on the pavement the whole way, you have to go around in gravel. And there are, quite a few residents up there who didn't like the gravel dust in the air and requested that dust belt had been placed on that gravel portion of it. We reached out to the contractor, the contractor provided us a, a price of four thousand hundred dollars to glade and water and dust pa, dust control uh, twenty-five hundred feet of gravel road. Uh, for the numbers I've seen, that's a good number, it's why I recommended it, a consent, consent agenda. This will be run through the project.
They'll only need one application?
Yes, yeah. Uh, typically you don't need multiple applications of a dust control. It's a chloride, so it pulls the moisture out of the air to keep the dust down. Uh, and this is coming out of the contingency because this project is, the bonding is set up, this is a contingency for, for that. Um, I did also, Mayor, request a confirmation that they would honor this price if we chose to do wall from the bridge to Lost River.
Okay.
They said they would, something for us to think about. Problem is that they want to do it at the same time, so we might have to think a little quicker than that, so.
Do the, do the what again?
Uh, do all, from Cheyenne, from Cheyenne River Bridge out to the first entrance to Lost River.
Okay, so when are they gonna apply this?
We have approved, we have approved it, or we approved it now, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I was gonna tell them tomorrow that it's been approved and then try to get a schedule on them, so.
Okay. Do that, cause if we were gonna do something on wall, we'd have to coordinate that with the county, get their happy blessing, et cetera, et cetera.
And it works out to, I believe, a little bit about a dollar sixty-eight a foot. And they said they honored that price, about twenty-eight hundred dollars to do from the bridge through the first entrance into Lost River, so.
Okay.
That was done last year.
Yep.
It seemed to be pretty favorable. There have been some complaints at City Hall about the dust and the, uh, condition of Wall Avenue. It is a township road with some city jurisdiction in certain parts, so it's kind of a it's a, multiple, multi-jurisdictional, so.
Yeah, the problem is the township handles most of that, which we were talking about there. We'd have about a hundred and fifty feet or so.
Do we need to approve these change orders?
No, we already did that.
Uh, we're getting up, we're coming up on change order number eight. These haven't been approved, these are a little more, more, for discussion and approval. The first change order is number, for Lost River. This adds so this, there's a description in your packet. It says lot one, block one will be graded to raise up to the proposed landscaping to provide better drainage. Lot one, block one is on the southeast quadrant of the entrance into Lost River, the first entrance, so when you go there, there's, um, very nice looking landscape and a sign just south of that, that lot was raised up and graded. Uh, Cas Road requires that the water service to the, uh, previous homeowner in the Fox Elder Circle be capped at the main. This is a, Cas Road has their own specifics on how they want that done, instead of capping it back at the end of the service of the house, they want it capped, right at the main, there was some additional cost of that. And then the other thing was electrical service to the three landscape areas for landscape lighting. The one thing to think about here is that it is assumed that the power can connect to the street light system, is something maybe Jeff, you could touch on a little more. Um, I guess it's, there's really not a lot of options to get electrical service to the medians and to the landscape areas. And if you do, it requires another meter, a whole another charge for each one, correct, Jeff?
Um, are, are we talking about the electrical portion, change order eight?
Yes.
I believe that was for some missing, um, the landscape plans called for lighting. However, the connection between the electrical box and the actual lighting was not called out in either of the plans. There's kind of this gap between civil plans and landscape plans, and so that item wasn't bidding. So, uh, the contractor asked for payment for that, um, because they ran out of the service, um.
Correct.
Yep.
But the other part of that is, is that they could tie into the city's streetlights as a feed.
Well, that's, that's the risk, right? Cause then that creates another area that's a load on that service.
I think that it's fine load-wise, it's just a matter of, right now, the city pays for the street lighting. And this is part of the landscaping.
Right, so those landscape areas that are lighted, uh, we signed up for service for those through the HOA. So we get a bill for those, those did not get filled through, so we actually.
Oh, so those, those aren't gonna be connected through the lights then?
Those are not connected to the lights, so those are connected to the electrical boxes. And we signed up, so we're gonna.
So they'll be built separately?
Oh, okay. It says in the change order that they were, that they are connected to the streetlight system, that's why I said that.
I guess that's, was that the direction that, that we provided? We provided, uh, we provided instruction to tie in the electrical boxes and build the HOA for those three areas.
Okay. And then the other thing was, uh, meter pits need to be installed for the irrigation system to each one of the, uh, landscape areas. There's a water service for that areas provided by Cas Road Water users. Uh, these are meter pits to the homeowners association for the irrigation of those HOA landscape areas, so. Uh, total cost of this change order is twenty-seven thousand thirty-five dollars and twenty cents. Uh, these are items that have been, that are essential to the overall project. They are integrated into it for all the work. So, uh, this or, this change order, I guess I would recommend approval because this, this does extend the completion to September twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
Also, but materially, it's, doesn't affect anything that's not holding any, anyone up?
Well, it's holding up the completion and that's gonna.
Right, that's what it's, it's holding up the completion, that's the only.
Yeah, there are some of these items that are like irrigation and, uh, and that that need to be installed to finish that project out.
So this be completed the end of September, you said?
Yes, nine twenty-eight. Like to see it done.
Yeah.
So, um, with that, I would, uh, comfort up to you for approval, if you so choose.
The money is there. The thing is, that was, that was my next question, is, is the money was in the contingency?
There is, yes.
To allocate for this, so I think it's, and the lighting and so forth was in the original scope?
Yes, the lighting, the lighting was, it was just, there was a landscape architect, there was civil and just tying together.
Just curious, how, how did it not get included in the original construction? Did they miss something?
If I may, yeah, Mr. Schmidt?
Yep.
Uh, I think it could be argued that, that, uh, pertinences and whatnot were called out with landscape plans. But, uh, through, through coordination with the contractor and with the engineer, uh, city engineer, that it was decided to pick an extra I don't know the total amount that he was asking for, for the wiring that he ran there, but it's not a significant amount.
No, it's, it's. No, it's, I'm just a little surprised that we didn't get caught before now.
Us as well, uh, again, they were called out on the landscape plans for lighting and pertinences and whether wiring, including, and so. Included there could be a discussion point, but it was decided to proceed this way.
I mean, the grading, the grading is obviously the right thing to do. Cause getting the grading is, you know, and Cas County or Cas Road Water, we gotta meet their requirements, you know? Again, so those two items, no brainer. So just how did we miss that lighting? So that was, and then, yeah, I hate for these projects to drag on, but it is what it is, so.
Yeah, you're right.
Make a, make a motion to approve the change order.
Okay, Ryan makes a motion to approve the change order. Get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
All right, the next one is change order number nine for Lost River, change order nine is more, um, sidewalks, irrigation around the pond. And so if the justification or the, the, the developer would like to install a ten-foot wide, five-inch effect multi-use path around the detention pond and also install as well an irrigation system in this area. The well would serve the irrigation system and be used in the future to maintain pond levels in a drought situation. You're gonna wanna walk through this one, Jack?
Yeah.
This one's kind of a. This one's kind of a, this one's kind of a... Uh, but we're maybe more orderable, so it's the...
Yeah, I think...
Not so much missed items, but just...
Yeah, thank you Jim, uh... So, what's proposed here is a, is a bike path around the detention pond. Um, the area that will be dedicated to the city, um, not to the park dis- district, but to the city. Um, you know, that, that bike path, um, I guess will be installed eventually. Um, we, um, kind of the story behind this is that, I think it was this last...
Um... It got it in the packet.
It would have been this last winter, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, Sharon and Zach May, who are here tonight, talked to me about a community orchard. And as part of Zach May's, um, Eagle Scout project, uh, we kind of talked about doing a community orchard. Um, they asked us if we had any land that could be used for a community orchard and, and we thought about the city ponder. Um, and so we had our landscape architect work with, uh, work with us and Zach on coming up with the design and a layout, um, that was, you know, I guess ultimately, um... You know, we, we filed a, a state grant or a grant application with the state of North Dakota, which was approved. And so, in order to provide support for the orchard, um, we thought it would be prudent, since we have money available, um, to get that bike path in first and then also provide irrigation to the fruit-bearing trees and plants. Um, so it is kind of a lar- it is a large amount of money. Um, we looked at doing Cass Road Water, um, but uh, due to capacity concerns, um, also, you know, we estimated that that would cost about two thousand dollars a year for the, uh, for water service through Cass Road. So doing a well, um, I do believe that there's an aquifer in that area. We don't need a water permit to the state because it's under five acres. So we thought that a groundwater we- well would be the safest or the, the most cost-effective way to irrigate this area long-term. And so, Sharon and Zach are here today, if you have any questions about the orchard or long-term maintenance of the property?
Well, the, the maintenance of the irrigation system would be, so the well, there's no special permitting that would be needed for the well? Jim?
Yeah.
There's no special permitting that would be needed for the well?
Uh, Jack looked into that, no, I mean, it's like it says, long design, I think, just for...
Right.
So, I mean, so the, the, oh, that, that would be the primary water? And then the electricity and so forth, you're running the pumps and so forth, that would be, again, covered under the, the HOA, or how would that work?
And I, I wasn't here the first time that was discussed, um, but I believe that city, correct?
And I don't think there was a discussion on the electricity, just that the city would be responsible for the maintenance of the orchard. So essentially, providing the irrigation system.
So if, if like a sprinkler head gets damaged or something like, you know, mower drives over and damages the sprinkler head, that the city would have to go maintain that? Or the park board? I guess it's park board, or I don't know who would maintain that?
This lot is dedicated to the city, uh, public first.
Okay.
And in the grant, we wrote the city.
Right. So, so this is an area that is completely discretionary?
Yep.
I mean, these are improvements that, you know, the city, uh, believes that they are, I guess, a good, good idea. You know, the bike path would eventually go in anyways. Um, you know, the orchard is, is definitely a, an amenity.
Hey, I don't really see a problem doing this either.
No, I, I mean, this is supporting, supporting the grant project and everything goes along with it, so...
Was there a plan, a landscape plan for the orchard?
Um, there is a, not a, well, there's a planting plan for the orchard. Um, I did send that over to Brent, uh, to send out to the city last week.
I think that's in the packet, right then?
I think it, it came in after.
Oh, it did?
Yes, it did. Let me see. I can find it here for you.
That was still the layout you guys were talking about with the orchards and how you wanted the trees and the root barbed and all that kind of stuff later on. There was a colored map when I got it at home.
Yeah. It was a movie.
Yeah, yep.
That's, I remember, I remember seeing the map with all of, you know, the, yeah.
Have the irrigation, should have told you this.
Yeah, I see the irrigation map here.
I sent it to Brent last week.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it here and I could, I can print one out for you. Uh, where is it?
Over waiting...
Here we go.
The particulars of this change order is an increase of a hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars eighty-five cents. Uh, with that change, the completion date stays the same to the amended completion date as a change order rate, twenty-eighth of September. And the contract price including this change order is four point three four seven million dollars, so... Um, I do believe that the money for this is in the contingencies.
That's what I was gonna ask, are we getting, and then how much do we have left then? Are we gonna contingency our way into zero here at some point, or?
Still have six and a quarter.
Yeah, we're okay, alright, now we're saying...
The, the thing you'll be closer with, that you reached before, I think he ran out, would be, uh, under century code, you can't have change orders that exceed twenty percent of the contract price, so...
You wanna wait for pre-pickers?
No, I didn't mean to... Don't put them outside. I mean, I remember seeing the photo, I just don't recall it.
I, I thought it had a picture, I must have left it at home, so...
I think this will be scope and run it up.
No, I like the idea, I think it's...
No, it would be good when it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
So I...
Make a motion sometime?
Uh, motion to approve change order nine.
Okay.
I'll second.
Can I get a second? Alright.
And with that, I don't think we'll have any more change orders for this. One more?
We'll have balancing change order in the project.
Okay.
Yeah, just balances.
But I think we'll probably start working on a punch list. Uh, you know, Jim will probably start working on punch list to close this thing out.
Correct.
Alright, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Okay.
Oh, I remember.
And you're able to see it.
Oh, I remember. Yep.
All good. Okay, so we'll go back here, guys. We, uh, did a little ten minute delay here on the resolution, awarding bid. And, uh, John got back to, to Lucas. Basically, it's not a penalty. Um, bond issues have call dates, which means you have to wait till it's prepaid. Generally, a call date of five years from initial issuance of debt. So, we do have something.
It has to wait five years.
He's, he said maybe.
It maybe.
He doesn't know what, what the requirements are in this particular one.
So, but they can have that.
Because it depends on who's issuing the bonds. They wanna guarantee their, that their interest is, that they're gonna get a certain amount of interest on it until they'll wait a certain amount of years.
The bond authority would allow us to shorten our length depending on how much they might pay.
Whoever issues the bonds, because they want the interest.
Yeah.
They wanna make money.
Of course they do.
Well, they're lucky for that, that's the whole point, but again...
And so it, it would have to check for this particular one.
So, right, so you...
What that, if there's a call date and then what it is. But he said typically it's five years.
Yeah, so... Alright, so do we want, do we wanna approve this improvement with that con- with just a contingency? Or, uh, that we check that and just get the actual date on when that call date would be? So we know for sure?
Is that, is that gonna change the decision at all?
I don't know. That's my only, that's my only question. That's what we're hung up on right now, is to see what that, that and the signing...
Jack, you see that being a holdup, that if it's no longer than five years? If we, if we prepay, if they, if we go over, or if there's excess funds and if it's within five years, that we will try and see what we can negotiate to say, alright, we can, but that's the intention, is that we would prepay the amount as early as possible.
Yeah, all we, all we've asked for, um, is to get a plan for, uh, being efficient with the bond funds.
Yep.
And that's all we care about. I mean, trying to review specials for the owner. So, if, uh, if, if it's prepaying the bond in five years, we're comfortable with that.
Okay.
And so, right now, I'm not making any guarantees on X.
Right.
There, I mean, there, there are many variables to this besides just whether or not there is a, that call date.
But if we can, if, if we can cap it or try to cap it, uh, to something less than five years, that would be acceptable?
Well, we don't wanna cap it either, because that's not us.
You can't determine that.
That's not us. We don't, we don't do any of that. That's the bond company, he's gonna say.
It, it would have to be pretty broad, just saying, uh, basically, attempt to...
Right.
Which the city's gonna do regardless.
Yeah, the city would do no matter what, it's a financial practice, but...
But again, if you're comfortable with the plan, I mean, that's one of the things. When we know what the call dates would be, that's something that we can certainly keep our eyes out for and try and pay down what we can at that point.
Right.
It may be eight years out, don't know, but we can at least put that in there.
But we can try and make that request when they issue the bond, act, when we actually issue it, right? For someone to...
It'll say that in the bond documents, what that call date is.
Right.
It's nothing that the city is going to have to draft or do anything. That'll come from, is it Doherty? Does that? That'll come from Doherty.
Right, if we, if we received some answers and we were comfortable, we would sign the improvement district agreement and provide the letter of credit and even issue a notice to the contractor. So, we just...
My, my point is, just because there is some extra there, doesn't mean that the state's guaranteeing that five years down the road, we're gonna...
Of course not.
The city's gonna pay all that towards paying it down, you know what I mean? The city can still say, okay, well, we still want to have some money left in that fund.
But we can investigate it, I mean, ask some...
Correct, yes.
Certainly look at it, but see where we're at.
The assertion is, that's our plan. Our plan today is to pay down the bond as early as possible.
With keeping money and whatever we're still comfortable with, but not excess.
Which is your strategy for all improvement districts.
Yeah, so...
So you're basically saying we're gonna implement our strategy that we have there, so...
You okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so with that, then we, we're contingent?
If you're, if you're comfortable with that, then...
Well, we're, we're contingent on the, the letter of credit that we're saying would arrive in days.
Tomorrow.
So...
Sign the improvement district agreement and letter of credit tomorrow.
And we believe we can do both of those. Okay? Okay, so I will make a motion.
To approve the bid based upon those two contingencies.
What he said.
Yep.
Second.
Alright, can I get a second?
Can I get a timeout? The motion would be a resolution, uh, awarding the bid and approving the contract between the city and the contractor, contingent on the signing of the improvement district agreement.
Right.
And the letter.
And the letter of credit being provided in the amount that's set in that agreement tomorrow.
Yes.
Did you get all that down?
Jimmy, you're scratching your head, what's going on? Okay, thirty-three, thirty-three, yeah.
Dizzy.
Sympathy gains.
Gotcha. Just wait, I don't make sure you got it all written down.
Yeah.
Something just gets lengthy.
Yeah, especially, I think one.
Okay. You're Brian.
I was first, Chelsea second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright. Just get that one still. You have a question?
I didn't want to be real, Jim, because he's on such a high-speed track there. But, um, related to the Maple Lane and being one of the benefactors of the dust that normally comes from the northeast along that road, my biggest notice of that is when people are speeding.
Sure, that's when it gets the dust in the air.
And flies, and they do fly through there. Now, I did, uh, visit with one of my neighbors there and they basically said that that is not city road, so the speed limit does not apply. I don't know, I'm bringing it up to council, because supposedly they say the city road is only the asphalt up to where the asphalt ends.
Which would make sense, that's why it was paved and not...
Which means then that they, you can go fifty-five on that road.
Mm-hmm.
But then, um, also, I was sightseeing a little bit and I was, um, right just past the bridge on all the way towards Lost River.
Mm-hmm.
And is that twenty-five or fifty-five?
That's probably ninety-five, depending on what time you go through there.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be twenty-five, but...
I was doing the twenty-five or just touch over.
And then you were a hazard.
Blew by me, passing me.
Yeah.
You know, creating a disaster.
Contractors do that all the time, man. We've been trying to get people to slow down, but yeah, it's...
Yeah.
Gone. They, they could be spending their whole time sitting out there in the morning and evening and they could bust everybody. They could probably pay half the debt off the city, you know? Ridiculous.
Residents who live out there.
Oh, okay.
Or moving.
Yeah, so, it's nuts. And that's, I wish there was a way to make that go away, but unfortunately, at this point, short of putting down the spike strips or, uh, bumps in the road, they're gonna make them stop, so... We'll proceed.
Alright.
Forward here?
No, I have an accent. We're up to eighteen.
Eighteen.
So, that's three, yeah. Uh, this is in an agreement with their engineering for construction engineering and surveying services for the Terre Garde subdivision. This is an hourly, not to exceed contract. It is based on a hundred and twenty hour, a hundred and twenty days of construction. Contractor uses less, numbers less. This is the number that was provided in the bond. And this is concurrent with the past projects that we've done for the city of Horace with full-time inspection of underground and as the, the streets and, uh, stuff that you can see. Um, the city of Horace has had trouble in the past with keeping track of underground items, so this contract with full-time inspection can keep track of it and provide actor as-built drawings to the city for their records, so... Um, this is not, nothing out of the ordinary, it's a...
Yeah, so this, we just never broken it all quite this way before, right?
No.
Correct. Yeah, well, I mean, this, this is what we included in it with projects, it just wasn't broken out.
Yeah.
So I guess...
I think it's a rubber stamp.
Just to, a clearer understanding of where the expenses are going and what they're for.
Yeah, it's a, it's a summary of the man-hours and expenses.
Okay, alright, makes sense. There again, this is included in the Terre Garde...
Yep.
...book holder, so it's, it's not like we're, we're just approving the agreement. We, we need us to approve this?
You do.
Yes. Okay, so then I'll request a motion to approve?
Yeah, it's very, uh, page fifty-seven. So, I, motion approve, because I, yeah, this make, absolutely makes sense.
Okay.
And we use these.
Brian has a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Page fifty-two to fifty-seven. So that's the agenda packet that... Email, or no, um, Nataia sent that, an email.
Yep. Alright, next up, Brent, you're up.
Okay, this, uh, new agenda item that you'll see in the future, just to cover just general city items, not to take full agenda item in place. Uh, mosquito spraying, uh, we anticipate to be spraying here. We were hoping to be able to do it tonight. Not enough wind, so if the weather cooperates, you have to have conditions just right. You have to have a little bit of wind, but you can't have too much, otherwise the chemical dissipates. Uh, if the weather cooperates, we'd be doing truck spraying tomorrow night or Wednesday night. Uh, something to keep in mind, we have been looking into aerial spraying. The downfall of aerial spraying is, it is expensive. So that's something to keep in mind. However, we did have counts that were very high. Uh, over the weekend, our trap counts were fairly high. They're the highest in the county. So we'd be spraying, but we also have to keep that in mind, uh, we could pull that trigger anytime to do the aerial spray if council would like us to do so. And if we were to do that, it'd be coordinating with, with the mayor and, uh, finding out. Okay, do we wanna do that or not, or do our best we can?
But we don't have a policy today to decide what is, what is our criteria, when our trap count level of which, at which we decide we're gonna trigger aerial spray.
Vance, the paperwork has gone through the channels here, so I mean, we just have to make a phone call now, or?
All it takes is one phone call.
It is a phone call, is a phone call to the contractor and then coordinate a time when they can come out. Uh, Wes Fargo did aerial spraying last night. I know that because I watched that thing go by my house quite a few times. Uh, and it's very, very visible. The public will know when you're doing aerial spraying, because it is...
And we've had...
You have an airplane buzzing in your house a couple times.
I've gotten text messages about it too, you know, if we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
Um, we also got... Um, we also got some comments that the mosquito seemed to go down after the boys went around last time around, knocking it down, so. Um, but it's probably just, I think we're gonna, they need to go and spray again. I know the winds are gonna be, this whole week is gonna be low winds. So hopefully they can find a time to hit this one more time.
So we're gonna try to hit, hit it. Uh, they, they said that they're out Saturday morning. I'm checking to verify, uh, but.
Do we have an approximate cost for an aerial application?
About eight thousand dollars.
Seventy is about eight.
Seventy-five hundred, eight thousand dollars. So that's why I say it's not cheap versus when we go do our truck spraying, it's.
Is it a lot more efficient though and?
Well, you encompass the entire city. With aerial spraying, you encompass the entire city where when you're doing truck spraying, you're limited to wherever the chemical gets taken by the wind off the road network. So that is your downfall, is you're not gonna get as much of the city with the truck, but the truck is drastically cheaper.
I think one of the things we need to keep, uh, keep an eye on here, because I know the counts went up again. That if those guys go out and do another aerial and the counts don't go down, we should bring in the plane.
Yeah.
Take one hit, one hit through town here and knock them down.
Yep.
Okay.
So let's, let's monitor the counts, find out when the boys are going out, um, whatever day that is, and they do another count after that. We're not seeing a, any reduction, then we hit it.
And you know, uh, a few days after significant rain, that's when you hit it.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, I know. That's what a lot to watch for is when, you know, they tell us.
Yeah.
But I, I think it's, yeah, let's, uh, let's, let's make it happen. Cause I think if we have to do an aerial spray, let's do it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cause one of the things right now is to, we're gonna go into a dry spell here for about the next two to three weeks, so. So.
It, it's, it's a gamble, you know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
If you're gonna do it and you won't really know if it made a huge difference or not. Um, the, when the public work staff was out here the other week spraying heavily, everybody and their brother and sister was spraying too. So I mean, you had West Fargo, Fargo, Vector and Horace, everybody was spraying. And so that's why you saw a huge dip or drop in mosquito numbers. Our trap counts were, uh, really under fifteen after all that. And to give you an idea, over the weekend, our trap counts, we just got the counts here right at the end of the workday and we're over two hundred. So that gives you an idea.
The hatch.
Yeah.
A couple of them.
So you just really have to time that mosquito hatch.
Yeah.
So, but we'll, we'll monitor and if we don't feel we made a very good dent into the pop, the numbers and, uh, like, so there'd be a coordinated communication with the mayor to
Yep.
decide to go that route.
What do they do with the, for the, the standing water? Any areas with standing water?
Uh, typically Vector Control addresses standing water areas, that, yeah.
That's what we do is our spray is kill on contact.
Yeah.
So the insects have to be in the air for our spraying to.
But there is somebody that's taking tree more.
That's the department of the county, Vector Control. You'll see them around town on four-wheelers or in their trucks and stuff all over town. They will go anywhere they feel they need to, uh, to do mosquito control.
Did they give any explanation to why they thought our area had higher counts?
We're lucky.
We, we.
Yeah.
Well, you have higher counts, you're by a constant water source and the diversion, the Cheyenne River right there. And you also have to think, Cheyenne River doesn't have as much current right now because it's blocked off by, uh, by, uh, I ninety-four. That area, cause of construction, so you don't have the current like you normally do. So those are just some different factors considered.
Plus we have a lot of infrastructure going on in town. There's plenty of places for them to lay eggs.
Yep.
Right, so.
So.
It is what it is.
We, we get the, we get the trophy for having the most.
Yeah, yes. Right, next up.
Just heads up, next council meeting, we anticipate big bring compost as a discussion. Uh, we've been working at options and layouts. Uh, we're looking at an option really that most heavily over at the lagoons area. And we have a concept we're working up, have some numbers tied to it. Uh, I did put it on the agenda tonight just because we already have plenty of items.
Yep.
Uh, community development director search. Uh, we have shortlisted the candidates to, I believe, seven or eight.
How many, how many applicants did we get?
I don't have the exact number. It was twenty-five to thirty, right in that range. So decent pool of applicants. We had quite a few, a handful come in after the fact. And they are not being considered in the mix of this. If we do not find the right candidate of this, we may go back to some of those, those late apps. But we have a deadline and we are sticking with, you know, those that are, met the deadline are the ones being considered at this time. Uh, like I said, we have seven day, or seven applicants that are being, they're gonna be screened through, uh, like Skype interview. And then from that pool, we'll narrow down for the list of finalists. And that would be at a future council meeting. It'll probably be a special meeting, just because we have very full agendas and that will make it a really full agenda if we don't do a special meeting. Uh, we're still working out the format of that's, that special meeting. Would we invite planning commission or how we engage it? But this group, this individual is gonna be very engaged with the planning commission and the city council, so there's probably gonna be some cross in between. Uh, but like I said.
Twenty-eight applicants.
Yeah. So I said, pretty, and we do have some pretty good qualified applicants. Some are, some are from the Fargo-Moorhead area and some are from out of state, so we have a good mix. So just a quick update for that. And the last thing I had as a general update was, uh, uh, more engineering is, we have the contract in place for them doing backup inspection services. So they have done a few backup inspection service inspections for us now and it's working pretty good so far. So it's early to be able to really tell you how much, like pros and cons, because they've only done a few. But I actually tagged along with one last Friday doing a final walkthrough of if occupancy and just to see what they're looking for. So probably do some more of those, just to go and get a feel for where are they looking for, are they finding things and how are they addressing things? And so that's just a quick update, general, uh, general things.
Okay.
The next item is a comprehensive plan update. Uh, since a scope was not included within MetroCog's advisory committee agenda and we haven't heard much from MetroCog on, you know, working back and forth drafting a scope. I'd say count on the scope would probably be, or you could probably count on the scope being brought to MetroCog and council here next month. We were originally planning on having it this month, uh, but they must've had some complications, not been able to address it. Uh, they have a ve- very, very full agenda. MetroCog's agenda, was it close to three hundred pages or less?
Uh, mostly, I have to do it hard enough.
Yeah, they're, but all their attachments and everything. They had a roughly three hundred page agenda and, uh, there is a seventy-six corridor study that is included on that. But our comp plan is not. Uh, had an interesting conversation with the park board chairperson, uh, about a week ago and followed up with him today. The park board is interested in being involved with the comprehensive plan, which is great to show that collaboration. Uh, uh, Wade Frank, the new park board chair, he is going to be going back to the park board to talk about would they be able to contribute financially towards the.